Good afternoon. We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council, January 7th, 2020, to order at 3:00 PM. Welcome to our guests. All council members are present. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. We will now recess the regular session and convene a work session with a report from city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon to you and all the council members. There are no changes to the agenda today. I would like to start out with an employee recognition to introduce our interim fire chief, Kevin McGee. Kevin, would you please stand? From 2007 until his retirement in 2019, Chief McGee served as the chief of the Department of Fire and Rescue of Prince William County, Virginia. In 2019, he was named the Fire Chief of the Year and Metropolitan Fire Chief sectioned by the International Association of Fire Chiefs. We're excited to have Kevin here and welcome him to Waco and appreciate him coming to help us out. Thank you, Kevin. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate you being here.
Informal reports. There is one for you today. It has to do with the women, infants, and children mobile units. And I believe Dr. Gray is here if y'all have any questions on that informal report.
Questions?
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite Larry Holesy to do the Holesy Report.
All right. Thank you very much. Turn your attention to your monitors and take a look at some great events and things that happened this past time. The annual chipping of the green provided an opportunity for Waco residents to properly dispose of their natural Christmas trees by recycling them on January 4th at the Paul Tyson Field parking lot on Lake Eyre Drive. Five hundred and sixty-two trees were recycled during the event and mulch and tree sapling was given to each participant. Waco Transit, along with community partners Benny Keith and Tow King, provided 133 Safe Ride Home to help prevent tragic traffic accidents over the New Year's Eve period. Party hosts and anyone who felt that they couldn't drive home safely could call Waco Transit for a free ride home and Tow King would tow their car home, all for free. Waco Police reported that from 7:00 PM New Year's Eve until 7:00 AM New Year's Day, there were no intoxicated-related crashes or DWI arrests. This is the 15th year for Waco Transit and Tow King to partner with Benny Keith to provide this free Safe Ride Home program over the New Year's holidays. More of the unique zoo sculptures have been put in place. Since our last report, everything is still on track for them to be, to all be installed by mid-January with the official ribbon cutting set for Janu, for February the 9th. Waco McClintock County Public Health District is reporting an increase in the number of flu cases over the same time last year. There were 724 confirmed cases of flu for the week ending of December the 28th. The health district recommends that anyone with flu symptoms, including a fever, avoid contact with others. If you're sick or experiencing any symptoms, please stay home. The health district posts weekly graphs at the city's website that shows what strains of the virus are that are active at the time, as well as this graph that shows the number of confirmed cases. The flu season runs through March the 1st and it's not too late to get a flu shot and that can prevent and lessen the impact of, and downtime if you do get the flu. Coming up on January the 18th is the District 3 cleanup where residents of that district can all call Keep Waco Beautiful to have bulky items collected at curbside and volunteers will help collect brush and other items to be disposed of properly. And in recognition of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day on Monday, January the 20th, city offices will be closed and that Monday's trash will be collected later that week on Wednesday. A wreath laying ceremony commemorating the life of Dr. King will be held Friday, January the 17th at noon at the Martin Luther King Jr. Park on the east side of the Washington Avenue Bridge. An parade and candle, candlelight vigil will be held on Monday, January the 20th. And because my report is a little bit shorter this time, I'd like to take this opportunity to show you the latest creative work by the municipal information team who worked with volunteers from MCC Theater Department and other city departments to create a new Wizard of Oz themed PSA to promote animal adoptions at the.
Where's Lion?
I'm a cat person.
In addition to the MCC Theater Department, here are the city departments that help. The PSA has been airing on the Waco City Cable Channel, has already reached over 40,000 people posts that on two different accounts on Facebook. And that completes my report.
Outstanding. It's great work by our office and appreciate everybody that was involved in that.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, council. There are two public hearings today. Clint Peters, our planning director, is here to talk about the planning public hearing item in the work session and Mallette Harrison, our economic development director, is here to review the economic development public hearing items also in work session. Under resolutions, I'd like to talk about a few of those today. The first is Resolution 2020 dash zero one three. This amends the city of Waco financial management policy statements effective September 30th, 2019. This was discussed at the Budget and Audit Committee in December, changing from unassigned fund balance goal for general fund of 18% of revenues to a 20% of expenditures. This increases our reserve and a strong, good conservative move on the council's part. And, and like I said, it was discussed at Budget and Audit. Resolution 2020 dash zero one five assigns $40,807,368 of general fund, September 30th, 2019 fund balance for the following classifications: capital improvements, economic development, public safety, culture and recreation, public works, subsequent years, budget appropriation, and other. And I want to thank Janice and Rusty and her team for all the great work they're doing on our, our finances and the council's guidance in making these adjustments. Great. Resolution 2020 dash zero one seven authorizes a 36-month contract with Carisoft Technology Corporation for Open Gov budgeting software, total amount not to exceed $542,901.54. This is a move that the council has encouraged us to make over the last several years and in the midst of our Tyler conversion coming to an end now. We, we're ready to make this adjustment and we have, I think, a good program put into place and I want to thank the IT department, interim director Kristi Acosta, and Deidra Emerson, Assistant City Manager, Paul Kane, Assistant City Manager, and our finance director, Janice Andrews, for putting this together and moving it forward because I think it's an important move for us.
Finally. Sorry. I love this software. I've loved it for years and I'm glad that we're finally going to be adopting it. I know that it's, it's not cheap, but, but I firmly believe and have for some time that instituting a program such as this and Open Gov in particular in promoting data transparency, not only for our citizens and the community at large, but also just having access to more granular, robust, and available data across our budget spectrum will help promote not only more efficiencies within our department, but will help promote better decision-making on behalf of us as a policymaking board. So I'm, I'm very thankful and encouraged and excited to see us finally implementing what I think is going to be a very robust, useful, and, and important tool for, for the city going forward. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, sir. Resolution 2020 dash zero two zero approves an amendment to the water park ground lease and operating agreement. The parks restoration staff is recommend a lease abatement with store master funding and Pro Parks Management. The operators of Hawaiian Falls in Waco, the abatement is worth up to $500,000 or seven years, whichever comes first. The money will be invested in a new 10,000-square-foot play structure at the park that will include 12 water slides. The slide complex is to be completed for the upcoming season and we're real excited about this agreement and the, the partnership with Pro Parks Management.
I think it's important to point out why we're, we're going to own this capital improvement at the end of the day. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We will.
And Pro Parks has been a really great partner, so I really do think it's a valuable relationship that we should continue to steward well and I'm excited about this and I, I think it's a wise use of our funds to make sure that we are thinking strategically about our, the breadth of our tourism industry and making sure that Hawaiian Falls is a premier water park for the region at large is important.
And just to add on to that, Dylan, a question, I think it's important too, that this is a capital improvement and it's common to have rent concessions when you have this kind of half a million dollar material improvement. I'm going to make sure that the design and construction standards and inspection, we're going to, we have control over that in this project as well. Bradley?
Yes, sir. Our parks team will be monitoring construction and ensuring, particularly since it's our facility.
Again, I think it's a good idea. It's kind of the concept of you got to keep things fresh for people to, to continue to use the water park and it sounds like it's an exciting addition to the, to the attraction.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to go back, while we, back up to 18 where, I know we use Byboard and maybe a couple of other groups to help us pick out vehicles. Is there a possibility that Byboard, because I really don't want staff to have to do this, but does Byboard have access to alternative fuel like electric for them to tell us, hey, this, this truck that we're buying for the concrete mixer body, you can buy an electric one for whatever, 400,000? I mean, does Byboard have something like that? I'm trying to figure out an elegant way to keep up to date on that information, kind of half-knowing it, but having some third party like a Byboard. I don't know if they even do it. Would they be able to provide that?
We, we check on that and get you some information on what all Byboard offers when it comes to alternative fuels.
Yeah. Perfect.
Get that for you. Let's see. Resolution 2020 dash oh twenty-one, this approves a facility mutual aid memorandum of understanding, approves and emergency medical services patient transport mutual aid memorandum of understanding for the purpose of providing mutual aid at the time of disaster. These are both volunteer agreements that the health district participates in as a member of the Heart of Texas Regional Advisory Council Trauma Service Area M. Resolution 2020 dash zero twenty-three authorizes the submission of an application to TechDOT for a comprehensive selective traffic enforcement program grant award for a total amount not to exceed $146,250. The grant reimburses officers for overtime expenses worked as a function of the program to reduce instances of driving while intoxicated, speeding, failure to use seat belts, and running stoplights and stop signs. And I can tell you from personal experience, our officers take this program seriously. Just a misunderstanding. Of course. Resolutions 2020 through 20, oh, 2020 oh twenty-four and 25 are projects on Franklin Avenue and on Fifth Street. Both of these are amendments to our contracts with the consultant engineers to, to complete the planning and design of the projects. And the reason I'm highlighting these two is because in both of these projects, we will, even though we do have some funding available in our, in our street program and, and through our CIP, we will probably have some funding challenges to get both of these projects done. We'll be bringing a report back to the council on that as we, as we put those numbers together.
I appreciate looking at this. I think that I, I understand the, the challenges that we face, but I do think that these projects are important to economic development and commerce in our downtown core. And so I'm excited to see what creative solutions we can find to try to get them over the finish line.
I have just a question on the 24, on the Franklin deal. I keep getting mixed up. It's my fault. I keep getting mixed up between we're talking about Washington two-way, Franklin two-way, Fifth Street. I'm trying to remember where we left at council in the work session on the Franklin Avenue general design from 18th on, on down. And I don't, is that part of the Walker group's work to, to look at different options there? Or did we give to Jed and the crew there, here's, here is the design we want, do the engineering study and the feasibility study? So I'm trying to remember if it's four-lane or two-lan, three-lane or what we handed off to Jed.
And we looked at, I think the council saw was a lane in either direction with a turn lane. But I know that staff is also looking at two lanes in each direction without a turn lane. And, and trying to make, take into consideration that this will be a, a critical corridor for the BRT.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be my point, Wiley, because if we're talking about bus rapid transit being in there, I mean, really, I hate to say not make it as sticky, but make it so you can get quite a bit of traffic through, back and forth through, all the way through the city on Franklin. So the Walker group will be maybe looking at two different options there. Is that safe to say?
Well, at least, and, and staff continues to work on that also. So we, we have some, quite a bit of discussion going on about that right now. Because we want to make sure we do it right, consistent with the BRT, we wanted to facilitate parking downtown and not create problems for some of the businesses down there, people that have invested. And then the other thing is that we need to make sure that we can afford it.
Yeah. All right. Thanks.
And then I wanted to also mention Resolution 2020 dash zero twenty-six. This consents to the assignment of contracts from BSP Engineers to the MRB Group as a result of an asset purchase agreement between MRB and BSP Engineers. The contracts include the 12th Street and Brown sidewalk project, the Mars Drive and Old Hewitt Road Improvement Project, which is a significant project in the industrial district. We're trying to make sure we get that one funded. Elm Avenue Improvements Phases Two and Three, and Trailblazer Park Improvements Project, Trailblazer Park being out at the end of the Cotton Belt Trail. Former BSP Engineers team assigned to these projects are now part of the MRB Group and will continue to work on these projects. Resolution 2020 dash oh two seven authorizes submission of a $30,000 grant application to Hot Cog for our Regional Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. We're scheduled for May 22nd. Partners cities include Hewitt, Lacey Lakeview, and Woodway. The council has previously expressed some interest in us doing more of these events and I can tell you, we, we're looking at that, but we're also looking at as we develop a new recycling center to replace cobs. We will be looking at expanded services there so we can possibly provide some of these services more, more times throughout the year. And that's part of the assessment we're doing and we do have a consultant working on that.
Yeah. My main encouragement has been for more robust availability of disposal options for these hazardous materials on a, on a more frequent basis. So appreciate y'all continuing to work and look at that.
Yes, sir. And then the last one, I think, this is the last one I wanted to mention is Resolution 2020 dash zero twenty-nine. This is a contract with Stole's Mechanical Contractors for the replacement of four butterfly valves at, at the Mount Cornwall Water Treatment Plant. These are old valves that were a part of the original plant construction, 1961. That was two years after I came to work for the department. Just wanted y'all to know that. So I was there when they were put in.
It's worn out now is what you're saying?
No, I think that this is, you know, the valves are old, obviously, and the gallery at.
Experienced. The valves are very, very, very experienced.
It's, it needed some upgrades there, but there were originally two basins at Mount Cornwall, it's a 30 million gallon a day plant, and we expanded it 1986 to four basins, four 15 million gallon per day basins. And each of these four valves controls the flow through those basins, so they're really important for you to manage your water treatment capacity at the plant and, and I'm, I'm pleased with the price and I'm pleased with the staff for bringing this forward. There are four, five ordinances today, the first being our combination tax and revenue certificate obligation issuance and Drew Masterson will be here today at the work session to talk about this item if you have any particular questions. But before that, I would like to say I want to thank Janice and particularly Rusty Hill for all the great work they've done on this project and I know that Rusty puts in lots of hours trying to make sure that the bond issue is ready to go and, and it's, I think goes without saying, it's very important to the, the council's infrastructure improvement program and, and every year we, we've been selling a pretty significant amount of bonds and getting everything right in line so that we can do that is, is real important. So I want to thank all the staff that's been working on that. And then ordinance 2020 dash zero three one, it's a first reading that amends several sections of Chapter Five, Animals in the Code and Code of Ordinances. Assistant City Attorney David Shaw will be presenting on this item at the work session. And then we have three second readings and that concludes my report.
Any questions? All right. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing known the consent agenda will include resolutions 2020 dash zero one one through 2020 dash zero two nine unless a visitor card is received on a consent agenda item. And I will now turn it back to Wiley to introduce the next work session presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Work session 2020 dash zero zero three, discussion of the planning public hearing agenda items. Clint Peters, our Director of Planning and Inspection. Clint?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We just have two plats on this agenda. The first one being the final plat of the Creekside Edition Phase Six. This is the next phase of Creekside Edition, which is a residential subdivision off of Warren Road in our Ritchie Road corridor. These are single-family residential lots on 22 acres containing about, containing 58 lots, which is a little bit more than two and a half units per acre. The lots range in size from 80 feet to 100 feet wide. This is the, you can see, they have a couple extra phases to build out and that Polo Park connection will be built out, which will be a new collector that connects Warren to Panther Way, which will help traffic out in that area. And then the next plat is the final plat of the Foundation Edition Lot Two Block One. This is a 64-acre lot being developed for the Merrick Engineering Manufacturing Facility at the end of Mars Drive and Jewel Drive. It's currently in our ETJ, but they have submitted a annexation request and you'll be seeing that at a future meeting. They will be constructing cul-de-sacs at the end of Mars Drive and Jewel Drive on this plat. And there is some floodplain in the rear that they, they show there. And both these plats are recommended for approval, meet all our requirements.
Thank you, Clint.
Thank you, Clint. And now, work session 2020 dash zero zero four, discussion of economic development, public hearing, and contract agenda items. Mallette Harrison, Executive Director of Economic Development.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Curious to discuss with you the economic development agenda items for your consideration. We have three TIF items, taxi, permit, financing, funding. Two are funding requests and one is a contract extension request. So first funding request is called Heritage on Webster. It's located at 823 Webster Avenue, which is the corner of actually Ninth Street and Webster.
Mallette, could you pull the microphone closer to you, please?
Sorry. Yeah, I'm not, not full voice today, sorry. So can you hear me now? Is that better? Sorry. Thank you, Jennifer. So it's located at, as I mentioned, the corner of Eighth, Ninth Street and Webster Avenue at 823 Webster. It's predominantly half of the block and it is where a former taxicab was located, taxi cab service was located, but it's a vacant property at this time. So the company proposing this project is called Elm Equity, Inc. They're a for-profit corporation that's owned by some of the members of Homestead Heritage. The directors of Elm Equity, Inc. are also owners in other businesses that you may be familiar with around the community, Heritage Barnes, Brazos Valley Cheese, and even Deerfield Estates.
Just sorry for interrupting you. Will you switch lights? I think we're still having a hard time here. We should catch closer. So we're getting closer and getting away.
Is that better? There we go. Go up to the front of this slide. Never had to be that close. I feel like a rock. The company is Elm Equity, Inc. and that's a for-profit corporation that's some of the members of Homestead Heritage. The directors of that for-profit corporation are also owners in some other for-profit businesses around town, Heritage Barnes, Cafe Homestead, Brazos Valley Cheese. So those are things that you might also be familiar with in the community that this particular group is already involved in. This particular project is proposed to be new construction, a mixed-use new construction on Webster Avenue that's predominantly retail and lodging. It's about 5,000 square foot of retail space that they anticipate for local artisan retail, a small coffee and fine pastry shop, and then 12 cottages, which are operated as a hotel. So they'll be built to hotel building code requirements. So they will have fire suppression sprinklers in each of the cottages. There will not be kitchens in those cottages. So it functions as a hotel, but it will, you have seen in some of the postings, information that regards short-term rental. They will, while this will be a hotel, it will not, might be a franchised hotel. So they will advertise for, to rent these through probably VRBO, Airbnb, those type of short-term rental venues, websites, but it will function as a hotel building code-wise. That's the distinction of why this doesn't need a special permit. And if you have questions about that, Clint can help with the details. So the bottom of this slide shows you specific to this project. There's the site plan on the left-hand side that shows you the retail artisan space, coffee shop up front, you know, urban scale along Webster Avenue. And then you see the individual small cottages towards the back half or back two-thirds of the lot that will function as the hotel rooms. You see the rendering on the right-hand bottom side that's specifically the rendering of this proposed development by this group. The, the pictures on top are something that they have already constructed. They're not proposing a, an event venue, which shows this wedding picture in it, but they are proposing this type of construction. It will look very similar to this inside the large retail space, so they wanted you to see the construction and what the venue would look like exterior, not just with the renderings, but also pictures of something that they actually have on the ground. Same thing with these small cottages. Be the hotel rooms, individual buildings, and that's, these are actual other cottages that they do have out at Deerfield Estates, but this is very, very similar to what would be constructed or is proposed to be constructed at this location. So the TIF recommendation on this, the total project cost is about 3.2 million, a little over that. They, their ask was for 722,000, which is a considerable percentage of the total project cost. The staff recommendation and TIF board recommendation to you is for 483,311, which is about 15% of the total project cost and the appraisal dispute value of 3.8 million. So additional recommendations that are on that include they should be under contract within six months of council approval, under construction within 12 months of council approval. Excuse me. Do a nonprofit without our consent. They must comply with all city ordinances, building codes, zoning requirements, et cetera. And the contract term would be for 11 years, one year for the anticipated construction time, and then 10 years of payments because we do propose that they would get paid out of the tax increment that this project generates. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Before we leave that one, what were the public space, I got to go back to my, what were the public space issues that were, were there sidewalks and lighting and all that going in and around? I didn't see a summary of that.
There it is. So you can see here on the bottom left-hand, there are, there will be some sidewalk constructed So you can see here on the bottom left-hand, there are, there will be some sidewalk constructed along Webster and also along the former Ninth Street. Ninth Street has actually been abandoned per their request and they're adjoining properties. So it in some way ceases to be public, even though it will still function very much like public space, but that is, allows them to have this perpendicular parking on Ninth Street because it's not a, functioning as a city street. It's one block back to the railroad and the abandoned Jackson. So we, our focus for TIF public improvements, it would continue to be public improvements as accepted by the city, would be the once-along Webster. So the sidewalk and the lighting that is predominantly on that public realm, but it will help some with the other public improvements that help with the pedestrian circulation around the exterior.
Okay.
Other questions?
So the next project is Washington Partners Limited and it is located at 729 Washington Avenue on the corner of Eighth and Washington. So the company summary for you is that Washington Partners Limited is a name many of you probably recognize. They have had a long history of property ownership in Waco and even specifically in the downtown area. The members of that are listed here for you, but they have been in downtown property ownership and general property ownership in Waco for quite some time. The specifics of the project are this, is this particular building. And it's been vacant for about 10 years, so it is in need of a little love, but it's 10,000 square foot building, basically, you know, very simplistic, 5,000 on the bottom floor, which they anticipate converting into retail space, 5,000 square foot on the second floor, which they can envision becoming office space. As I mentioned, it's been vacant, but it is also a contributing building to our National Historic District, so we don't want to see anything done to this that would eliminate that designation for this building. The proposed project is really to open up those upper story windows with appropriate scale windows for those, all those openings, and these are actually the style of, they've told me the style of window that is in there, they were just covered up and they are, they are still there. A different type of awning, you'll notice in the old, or you make, it's hard to see there, but there had a, it had been revised to have a corner entry, or it had a corner entry with a corner post there at the, at the intersection, and their proposal is to also move the entries to the Washington Street side and take away that corner cut there at the corner of the building and then redo an awning. Additionally, there's a little bit of street scape there, obviously, and trying to widen the sidewalk just a little bit, make it a little more pedestrian-friendly in that space. And the, on the right-hand side there is just simply a very basic floor plan for what the retail could be, either one or two spaces on the bottom floor, and then they anticipate office on the upstairs, which could be any number of configurations, one tenant, multiple tenants. I'm sorry. So the TIF recommendation on this project, which is about 1.8 million total construction cost, their ask is 514,960, which is a large percentage of the total project cost, 27%, but it breaks down in sort of two distinct pieces. One is the building improvements, which is about 11% of the total project cost, 206,000. The public improvement piece is really correspond to the Washington Avenue two-way conversion, so I have those broken out here on this slide. The public pieces that are street scape, pedestrian lighting, but the traffic signal, traffic signal box, that sort of stuff, which we would propose to reimburse when that actual piece is completed, because this is essentially, it's a sliver of the Washington Avenue two-way project. That would be the 308,960 and then the building project itself would be 206,000 for the new windows, storefronts. And we anticipate that being paid in two payments after certificate of occupancy, two annual payments. So additional recommendations on that are a contract term of four years, one year for construction payments, and then an additional year of appraisal dispute. Same thing, under contract within six months of council approval, under construction within 12 months of council approval. They must work with Public Works to ensure that all the sidewalk designs and the construction that they are doing in the public realm space is going to blend seamlessly with the overall Washington two-way project. That can't be sold to a nonprofit. And specifically that no renovations that would cause this to be a contributing building, to stop being a contributing building to the historic district, no renovations of that nature should be undertaken. What they have proposed so far has been okayed by the Historical Commission and the Local Landmark Preservation Commission. They would rather it not be painted, but they, that in and of itself doesn't remove the historic fabric and the character of the building.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Will Historic Preservation be walking through the process with the builder to ensure that they do not lose the certification?
I don't know exactly how it is handled. We have asked, we asked the Local Landmark Commission for like a certificate of appropriateness and we sort of lean on them for the, making sure that they abide by that. For us, it's all about the exterior.
Sure.
So modifications on the interior don't affect that.
Sure.
But it's making sure all the openings are appropriate in the storefront scale and such as, but we have asked for information from both Local Landmark and Historical Commission that says, yes, this is okay.
Nothing is exciting that they're breathing new life into that building. It's, it's an old building, like you said, it's been vacant for some time. I started my career right across the street from there, just shortly after Wiley started. Long, I should say, long after Wiley started. But it was at the bank right across the street. It used to be the old 4C Business School, I think, right there, that I'm sure a lot of Waco citizens went through that education process in that building. But looks like a cool project and right on Washington that we're trying to, we're spending a lot of money there, making it two-way and doing a lot of cool things there with the bike path. This project fits perfectly into our vision.
Mallette, what was the concern from the Historic Landmark Commission of painting the building?
It's a general concern that if a brick has not been painted, it should not be painted.
Okay.
It's the, just the original, it's the original, so that's, that's. But obviously, there is certainly a trend in our society for painting and refreshing older things, and when you keep all the structure itself and just paint over it, it's not nearly the desecration that it would be as if you ripped all the really historical elements off and did something else. So it's survivable.
Right.
Even undoable.
But they were okay with the painting, moving forward with it?
Preferred not, but we're okay.
Okay. And then I had to agree with Councilman Holmes, I mean, it's a very cool project. I'm very excited to see it, work on a building that has been vacant for so long, and I do appreciate you clarifying that the public improvements that they're going to do on the Washington Avenue side would, we will make sure and be cognizant that it coincides with the rest of the work that's going to take place in Washington, so it's blended in seamlessly. So I appreciate you looking into that and making sure that that's addressed, so thank you.
Yes, yes, well, I appreciate actually the help of our engineering department, traffic department, and the engineering firm that's working on it. We had several meetings to make sure everybody understood what pieces needed to be done with this.
Wonderful. Thank you.
That's definitely measure twice and cut once, because there's no need in redoing something that's already being done. I, I am grateful to see the project also. I, I do understand the hesitance of Historic Preservation, it's just because, I mean, these are the only ones that we have and they are old buildings, but when you do have an opportunity to breathe life into them, it does, especially in a block like that, a block that is growing, a block that is vibrant right now and is now going to be anchored by some really fresh things and continue to, the business and growth and support of those businesses that are already there. I mean, it's a very good thing.
Do we know the amount of square footage for the Class A office space on the second floor? Because I know that's a, that's something that we've identified as a need downtown, so thankful to see it and happy that we'll have it. I just was curious as exactly how much?
It's about 5,000 square feet on the second floor and the, and the bottom floor.
It's a good start. Okay, I guess I missed that.
There will be a little bit of that, obviously, that's dedicated to joint facilities, bathrooms, elevator, that sort of thing, but largely almost 5,000.
Okay, good.
It's a good team. They've done good work on some of their other projects, and I got to see one of their offices that they redid that is Class A and it is outstanding.
Mallette, I have one question. This is a great project and I'm happy that we're moving forward with it. Just in general sense, I'm trying to understand how staff comes up with its recommendations for the repayment period, because the other payment repayment period was so much longer. This one, it's two years, so I'm just talking, I'm not talking about the public space, I'm just talking about the building improvements. How do we, how does staff determine what to recommend to the TIF Board on that?
Well, we had just internal discussions about that and predominantly it has to do with the fact that they are fronting the cost of significant public improvements at that block as well, and stretching just that $200,000 amount out over several years just didn't seem to be like the best approach when they had fronted more than that for the public improvement piece. But we are open to other suggestions, but that was our discussion with staff and proposed to TIF Board.
Well, I think part of my concern is that that also limits the appraisal dispute period because we only go one year beyond the contract period, and so there are multiple effects when we shorten these contracts, and so I just think we, I know it's hard to be consistent with these things because they are all, they are all unique projects, and I recognize that challenge, but I'd like for us to continue to work on trying to be more consistent about those things going forward.
That's good.
So the contract amendment request comes to us from the cottages at Cameron Heights and specifically an extension of their request. And just for clarification, there are sort of two pieces that people refer to as Cameron Heights. There are the rental units that are on one side of Boski, between Boski and Waco Drive. There are the actual cottages, which are single-family homes, which are between Boski, the other side of Boski Avenue, which is shown here really in a very undeveloped state. There, it's much more developed than this now, but it's this piece right here on that side of Boski Avenue. This has been an ongoing project for quite some time, originally linked completely to the Cameron Heights piece and then separated. But the funding was approved by council in 2011 for these homes to be built, and it was anticipated then that a completion date would be in 2015. They came to us at the end of 2015, we're not going to meet that. And in early 16, council granted an extension through the end of December 2019. They have not accomplished that, but do believe they will be completed with all units built and sold, hopefully sold, should be sold, by the end of 2020. They have eight units currently that are completed and sold. There's 19 total. So then eight units that are currently under construction, four of those are already pre-sold. So then there's three units remaining that would still need to be constructed and sold. They anticipate starting construction of those sometime this spring, as soon as these eight units are completed, or at least some of the pre-sold ones are completed. In the course of this, they have changed lenders. They were working with a nonprofit lending group that didn't allow them to do as many spec at a time as they wanted to. And there also was some other difficulties that they encountered along the way, even just the arson that happened on the other side of the street that one developer for the two projects. But they do anticipate that they will be able to be completed and in 2020. I know he will be here this evening to answer any questions you might have of him directly, but just for your knowledge, this is old enough that it was structured the way we used to pay TIF grants out, was sort of on an as-completed basis. So out of the total 437,000, most of that has already been paid. Only 10% was held back until the total project was completed, so 393,552 has been paid and 43,000 remains to be paid, so that's what's still being held back on this contract, waiting on completion.
So the extension only really applies to 43,000 bucks?
Right. Okay.
Are they required to be sold before they can be repaid? Is that part of the contract?
That's the way the contract is structured. And some of them were required to be affordable units, and they did have some difficulties finding affordable folks who qualified at different pieces, but that wasn't one of the predominant reasons for some of the delay.
But they do feel pretty confident that they will finish building the remaining three and sell the seven by the end of the year?
I think they feel very confident they will finish building all of them, barring anything happening weird in the market, they feel pretty confident about having them all sold as well.
Okay.
But if something extraordinary happened, you know, market forces might dictate that they weren't sold.
But the extension that they're asking for is to make sure that the building deadline is done by December 31st of this year?
It would still be built and sold is how the contract is constructed.
So built and sold by the end of this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So if that doesn't happen, then he's, he's going to probably be back asking for another extension.
Yes, sir.
I think this is a good project. I think that it's kind of still on the, I mean, literally the, you know, edges of the TIF where the market really hasn't taken hold and this developer did kind of go out on a limb. I mean, I know this has been going on for a while now, but when there wasn't much downtown development occurring, so I think it's a good, good project. I'm personally very happy with one-year extension, or fine doing that, because I, I think that, you know, there are challenges with development, particularly when he started in that part of the TIF zone, so I think it makes sense for us to do, give another year.
I do think it's a good project also. I guess my question was more like, is the one-year extension enough for them? You know, you know, showing the, the maybe difficulties that they've had in the past and the number of units that have been sold per year, I don't know if that one-year extension will help them reach the goal that they're looking for.
That was their original ask.
Okay.
He, he, obviously, our discussion about, is this it? Are you sure that's enough? We had that discussion.
Okay.
Well, he feels very confident in the construction, but something could happen in just the overall housing market that might
Sure.
hinder the selling process. So, but if you saw fit to do it longer, that would be fine, but he believes and hopes that 2020 is it.
I think if he, you know, he knows or she knows their business better than anyone else, and if they feel confident with the one-year extension, I'm okay with that. I would just try and prevent them from having to come back to council a year from now asking for another extension, you know, just so they could have the time to work on it.
Yes, sir. And if, I mean, we can, I will convey that to, if not here, I will convey that to him, and if he wants to bring that up at the public hearing tonight, or if any of you want to ask that question, we can broach it.
We're only posted for the one-year extension.
Yeah, it would have to go.
So we could not act on any, on any further extension tonight without reposting?
Yes, I mean, I believe we've done all the notices saying we're going to, it's for a one-year extension. I think to give them more, the better course of action would be to, to not vote on this tonight and to bring it forward for first reading at the next council meeting.
I will say my preference would be to just grant the one-year extension and keep the, you know, some of the pressure on to get this wrapped up.
Okay.
But that's, that's just my, my.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mallette. Mayor and Council, our next presentation is the discussion of the proposed issuance and sale of the 2020 certificates of obligation. We have Janice Andrews, our Chief Financial Officer, Drew Masterson with Masterson Advisors, and Glenn Opel with Braceall. Well, that's what it says here. Welcome, gentlemen and lady.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and city staff. It's good to be here. I'm Drew Masterson. It's Glenn Opel here. Of course, you know Janice. Just to talk briefly about the certificates, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Too close to it. I have had my flu shot. But just real briefly, your numbers on the left side of the screen there show that we anticipate issuing approximately 59,440,000 of certificates. That would include about a $5 million premium, which I'll show you where that goes in just a second. We would have total debt service of roughly 82 million over the 20-year term with average payments of just under 4.1 million per year. As of yesterday, we estimated the interest As of yesterday, we estimated the interest rate at 2.45%. By way of reference, last year, we sold approximately the same amount of bonds certificates for 2.97%. So rates are down from, from last February. The different projects there include governmental water, W. Mars wastewater, for a total of 64 million. So as I said, we're selling 59 million, but funding 64 million, and that $5 million difference is anticipated premium on the bonds from the bidders. And you can see on the right side of the page, the debt service breakout by the different types of projects. Your debt service structure over time is shown on page three here, and basically, a declining debt structure, which is good. It leaves room for future bonds to be issued. Glenn is going to cover page four.
Thanks, Drew. Glenn Opel with Bracewell, the City's Bond Council. As shown on this page four, it's expected that the bonds would be issued pursuant to a competitive sale. The gist of that is that the bid, the bid that results in the lowest effective cost among all of the bidders would be the one that is chosen. Laid out underneath that are a number of factors that I think favor the competitive sale, and if you have any questions about those, I'm sure Drew would be happy to answer those. The action item that you have on the agenda is the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the COs within specific parameters. Those parameters are set forth on this page four, a maximum interest rate of 3.75%, and a maximum par amount of 65 million. In addition, the ordinance sets out the basic provisions and terms of the bonds. It also, as a parameters order, delegates the authority to the city manager, any assistant city manager, or the CFO to finalize the terms of the sale of the bonds. And I would also note that notice of intent to issue the certificates of obligation has been published in the paper and posted on the city's website in accordance with law. Happy to answer any questions about the ordinance, if there are any. Drew, I'll turn it back to you to address the timeline.
Okay. One thing I forgot to mention on the numbers is that there's no refunding component this year, no refinancing under current tax law since 2017. We can only refinance bonds that are within 90 days of their call date, so we don't have any old bonds that are currently callable in this timeframe. So it'll be a year or two before we have the opportunity to do any tax-exempt refunding. The last slide we have for you is the timeline. Basically, with your action tonight, then you would be approving the bond documents, essentially, as Glenn outlined. We would be receiving the bids on February 13th, and the pricing officers for the, for the city, namely Wiley and Janice, I believe, would, would review those bids with us. We would check the math and all that sort of thing, their compliance with the bid specifications. And then they would award to the low bidder on the 13th, effectively locking the rates on that point in time. And we would fund and close around March 12th. So that's basically the timeline, a lot of work going on right now, preparing for rating presentations towards the end of the month. Your rating is AA3, AA+. Almost the highest rating you could have within one notch of the AAA rating, so extremely high bond ratings, and hence the very low interest rates you're able to borrow. We're happy to answer any questions.
I'm curious, I don't think I asked this in the budget audit meeting, but if we had been able, if the tax law hadn't been changed and we could have refunded, would it have been advantageous for us to have done so this year?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I just want us to recognize that, I mean, it's costing our local taxpayers money, the fact that we can no longer do that advance refunding, and that was, that was the tax law that changed. But more broadly, you know, the item on the agenda tonight about increasing our reserves, general fund to 20% from 20% of expenses to 18 of revenue, the work that you guys are doing, the work that staff and this council has done to be very prudent and purposeful in investing in our infrastructure, and the foundational nuts and bolts of our, of our city that can encourage and lay the framework for future growth down the road. It's, all of that work, it's to have a, one rating right below AAA by both of the major rating agencies, is something that takes years to accomplish, and prudent decisions by this council and prior councils. And so I just want to, just give my appreciation to you guys, Drew and Glenn, for the work that y'all do as our advisors in supporting us on this, to staff and to the council for keeping us in actually really, really good fiscal condition. And that even though the nominal dollar amount here is not small, you know, 65 million is, you know, nothing to sneeze at. I mean, these, these funds are going towards very fundamental infrastructure, roads and pipes, that will facilitate the future economic growth and expansion of our community, and it's, and it's, it's an investment, and not all debt is bad. And so I just want, I just want to say to everybody, thanks, because this, this is just indicative, and the fact that we're going to be able to get, hopefully, the rate that we will get, is indicative of really, really good work fiscally by everyone involved over, over many, many years.
I'll just, John articulated it so beautifully there, I hate to follow him with my comments, but I'll try. I mean, I'm doing these bonds, and I spent some time in my career doing this sort of thing. Execution is everything, how you get it priced, and what kind of terms you get. I know it depends on the rating, and the city's in such great shape there, but also the projected cash flow, the systems that we have, the policies and practices, it's kind of a big picture when that rating comes in. And it's a reflection on the people and staff, I'll say, and then ultimately, the city, and it's a good reflection on the city of Waco, that we have that good of a rating right now. And so I just want to appreciate the taxpayers kind of supporting this kind of growth for the city, and also the staff for actually kind of monitoring how this works, and it's very important. As we put, like, we spend a bunch of money, or we're spending some money wisely on systems for budgeting, and that kind of fits in, maybe you don't see it now, but you'll see that'll fit into a better bond rating. Or bond raider, rating agencies look at that sort of thing, on how efficiently you're running the business of running a city. So I think everything we do, and I think we're, most of us up here thoughtful about how we spend that money, with the thought that ultimately, the cheaper interest rate, as John said, is real money that we're saving here. One question that I had, and again, I appreciate the Masterson group helping us get this into the market, are the, what is the current market like, are spreads tightening, widening, or just, I know it's day-to-day, but what is, what is your thought on how things are going? And also, we don't price for another month, but...
Right. Well, they're, they're phenomenal. We're near record-low interest rates, roughly 100 basis points below where we were this time last year. You sold, you know, in February or March last year, so rates had come down quite a bit already by that point, but extremely good time to sell. The more disruption there is in the global security front, the more flight to quality we're seeing to the US bond market, and that's, that's flowing into, money is flowing into the municipal bond market as well. Rates are down eight basis points since the Iran general was, was killed, which is, you know, just a flight to quality.
In one week.
But they were in that trend direction on the long end of the yield curve as well. The short end of the yield curve has come down a little bit, but had gone up quite a bit as well in the past few years. So overall, rates are really near record lows.
Great. Good time to be pricing.
It is, and for cities in particular, municipal rates are lower than, and the spreads are tighter, and then the, our, our cost of borrowing is less than it has been, because people recognize that cities are actually in really good fiscal condition relative to other entities at higher levels. And as such, that we can take advantage of that to, again, invest in our city, invest in our future, so.
One other thing we did discuss at Finance and Audit Committee was the legislature has certificates of obligation in the middle of their bullseye for legislative reform, and you all are, you know, just the exemplar, utilizers of, of certificates of obligation. Your, your governmental projects are just mainstream infrastructure, and then you, you use all your utility funds in the same CO issue as your governmental project, saving costs of issuance, which is basically us, the underwriters, and the printers, and even the rating agencies. So, you know, effectively, you'd be doubling your, your issuance costs to go to a utility revenue bond, plus a voted GO bond, which would be the alternative in the future. So you'll see that coming in the legislative process next year, and, you know, it will cost Waco considerable sums of money if you're not allowed to retain COs.
Other questions? Drew, I know it's hard to predict, but is there any possibility of us increasing our rating in this next cycle?
I think our rating increases were, Janice, or Rusty, you can correct me, but just a couple of years ago. And usually, it's, for a healthy, growing city, it's five to 10 years between rating changes. They would normally put you on a positive outlook as a signal of a possible upgrade.
Okay.
So I think, you know, all systems are go, we're going to charge hard, and the centerpiece of the presentation will be the, the new fund balance policy. And so we'll definitely give it our best shot, but realistically, I think a positive outlook would be, would be huge win if we could get that.
I think we've had two increases, two rating increases in the time that Councilmember Canard and I have been on the council, so that would be consistent with about every five years. So, okay, very good.
I have a hat in my closet at home that says AA on it, from when Waco went from A1 to AA-. So that was probably 20 years ago.
All right, very good. Thank you all very much, we appreciate your work.
Give it the good work, guys, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mayor and Council, our next work session presentation is a discussion of criteria for resolutions of support for proposed projects applying for inclusion in low-income housing tax credit program. We have Galen Price, our Director of Housing and Code Enforcement here. Galen?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In this presentation, we will discuss an overview of the program, discuss the proposed city of Waco policy, followed by the recommendation and next steps in the process. The low-income housing tax credit program is a program administered by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, which was created by the Tax Reform Act of 1986, providing private financing for the development of affordable housing units. Projects funded through this program increases the availability of affordable housing units in the market via new construction and/or rehabilitation or renovation of existing housing units. To give you an example of how the tax benefit works for investors seeking to reduce their tax liability, let's say a company has a net income of $1 million, with a marginal tax rate of 40%. If they have no credits, then they would have a tax liability of $400,000. If the company takes $300,000 in tax credits, their tax liability is reduced from $400,000 to $100,000, as the credits offer a dollar-for-dollar reduction in their tax liability. There are two types of credits offered, the 9%, which is a highly competitive process, and the 4%, which is non-competitive. The final decisions made regarding the allocation of 9% housing tax credits will be made by TDHTA's governing body in July. A resolution of support does not guarantee approval of the project by TDHTA, however, it does allow them to secure additional points with their application. Now, if supported and approved, the city will be required to provide a financial investment to the project equal to $500 or more, which can be accomplished through the waiver of fees. Waco has had several of these projects over the years, with over 1,000 units being developed through the, the tax credit program. The most recent project was the Barron's Branch project, which was resulting in the construction of 153 units. This slide shows the income limits for the different household sizes that would be eligible to reside in these properties. Each property has a certain number of units set aside for any income levels at 30, 50, 60% and market rate units. For example, the max rent someone would pay if they were at 30% of the area median income for a household size of one would be approximately $359, which would include utilities. At 50% of area median income, that person would pay $565, including utilities. At 60%, they would pay $678, including utilities. The proposed city of Waco policy, these recommendations that are suggested in the policy are derived from previous discussions with the city council during the 2019 Resolution of Support process. Staff believes the policy recommendations reflect strategies that will help us assist in addressing ongoing initiatives, initiatives here in the city of Waco, including collaborative efforts with the Waco Housing Authority and the equity and inclusion efforts. To ensure the minimum mix rate is achieved, we will enter into a developer agreement prior to the city's contribution to the project, and monitor to ensure that these standards are maintained. Regarding community involvement, notifications are required to be sent to all property owners within 500 feet of the proposed site. A copy of the letter and the number of properties to be notified are required to be submitted to the Director of the Housing Department five days prior to the actual issuance of Based on discussions with potential applicants for the 2020 Qualified Allocation Plan, which was developed by TDHTA, Waco has a high-ranking potential for a project to be awarded here this year. Staff has had conversations with developers in reference to potential sites in Districts 1, 2, and 3. A project previously supported in 2019 appears to be on track to receive credits and is currently in the zoning process. This project is located along West Highway 6. For a recommendation standpoint, staff recommends the creation of a resolution for council approval regarding the policy. There is an express need for additional affordable housing units here in Waco, whether it be for rental and/or purchase. Low-income housing tax project, low-income housing tax credit projects, if awarded, provide an opportunity for this city to invest in addressing one of the express priorities with a minimal income investment. The next steps would be a resolution of support for each project that meets the criteria would be presented to you at the February 18 city council meeting for your approval. At that point, each project that is approved would await final notice of award from TDHTA. Now, as a reminder, a resolution of support does not guarantee approval from TDHTA, however, it does provide critical points necessary in the scoring to achieve the project funding. Now, if awarded, the projects would still have to go through the city's development process, which would have us looking at construction in potentially 2021. Are there any questions that you may have?
I have a quick question on, when you say a minimum of 85% to 15%, do you mean, does that mean that there's, it could be anywhere from 80% to 100% affordable, 85% to 100% affordable, or does that mean it could be anywhere from, yeah, explain that to me?
We would recommend, in our policy, that they would have to have at least 15% of the units as market rate units.
At least 15%? They could have more.
They could have more.
Affordable unit maximum would be 85%?
Yes.
Okay, that, that was a good clarifying question. I was adding that myself. Did we, oh, sorry, do you, just on the policy, I mean, have we not had... Did we, oh, sorry, do you, just on the policy, I mean, have we not had the policy criteria before? Have we just kind of considered these on an individual basis? Okay, I mean, so, no, I appreciate this. I mean, I think having a rubric in place for what we'd like to see in these projects is important. And I think this is a, a, kind of a good start to that. And I don't have any recommended changes at this point. And I guess, and so, okay, yeah, so I'm, I'm okay with this, and I guess we'll see how many projects we have. I mean, I know we've, there have been some interests, but there could be more between now and the next meetings, right?
Yes, there could be more and it actually could be less. Pre-applications are due January 13th. So from that, we'll, we'll get a better idea of who plans to proceed moving forward in the process.
Okay. And I get, oh, sorry, back to the, to the policy thing, just I'm going back to the 85, 15 and minimum, maximum. I mean, I'm assuming that the tax credit, the, the competitive process and what the state looks for, I mean, having a high amount of affordable units is part and parcel of what, would, would, would be a qualifier for this. So there wouldn't be anything that would qualify to be 100% market rate, which wouldn't make any sense?
Right.
Okay, okay. So, but, so they're incentivized to have as much affordable as financially feasible for themselves, but we're just setting a floor at 15% for market rate? It could be higher. Okay, okay.
Galen, great presentation. And thanks for updating us on the LHTC. Now, last year, I'll teach questions. One of the timeline, they have until January 13th to submit an application, is that right?
There's the pre-application, and then from there, they move forward through a scoring and ranking process, which typically accumulates in May, June, with the board, the final projects being presented to the board. Now, that timeline can extend out longer. It just depends on TDHTC.
Like last year, there were, weren't there two projects?
Yes, sir.
The one on six, I think there was one on Lake Shore.
There was one at 19th and Lake Shore, correct.
And then they both graded out, and neither one of them was, neither one of them was, became eligible for the credits, right?
Initially, yes, but through the, there's a process, like it's known as somewhat of a, considered a collapse, where credits that are not used in other regions get redistributed, redistributed. And so based on that redistribution, there was a project, a project on Highway 6 did receive a reduced number of credits. So that's why they're currently going through the zoning process.
Thanks.
Now, that project was a senior project, so, and it's still remaining as a senior project.
Sure. Just coming back to 85, 15, how, how do we land on those numbers? Because I like having those boundaries, but one of the questions I've always had in this is, I think mixed income is critical when we're having a discussion on affordable housing. And, and yeah, what is the, why do we land on that 85, 15?
It's, right now, it's a, it's a starting point, and it gives the mix of, of need to, for them to actually qualify from a potential tax credit standpoint, because the more affordable units you have, the better off your, your, your project stands to, to score. However, we do want the mixed income piece in there and component, as discussed before. Now, these are, this policy is fluid. It can change, because one of the things that we are, have upcoming is the housing study, our strategic housing plan, and these are one of the components that we'll look at regarding the mix, the mixture of affordable versus market. So depending on what comes out in that plan, these are subject to be revised as we move forward in the future.
That's great. And I, I think that that's kind of what, the, the last thing I was going to say is, I think that we, you know, there's still a need to have a global discussion on affordable housing. And, you know, I would love to see what other places have found, it'd be that right, that sweet spot of market to affordable, because I'm in favor of maximizing the affordable units available in these developments, but want to make sure that we have a development that's built for the long term and has some sustainability components to that. And my understanding is that, that making sure that there is a, a mixed income component to that is important. I'm, I'm anxious to see what that, where this discussion on housing goes, so, that's great.
Well, and I think this is a good opportunity. Again, this is just a starting block for this, but for us to, from a policy standpoint, indicate to developers, when they're going through this process, what we'd like to see. I mean, you know, this last year, now we got two senior housing proposals. And, and so if that becomes a priority of, of the council, then let's have that, you know, prioritize senior housing. And that's, yeah, and that, that, for us would, might, might bring it to the top, or this is its mixed use, or whatever it might be with these other requirements. I mean, I think this, this is good to help give developers some guidelines, and for us to be more proactive in shaping what sort of affordable housing comes into our community is to have, have these things in place to, to indicate, indicate our preferences for the projects as they come, come up.
Galen, thank you so much for the presentation. I do have one quick question for you. So once the projects are decided upon, where, or is there a time where there's community input involved?
Yes, well, part of our initial policy is for them to have community meetings prior to them actually being brought to you for input regarding the resolution of support. That's one of the things that we've outlined here in our policy. So the community, it's necessary for them to notify and have meetings with the community prior to the issuance of the resolution of support, so the community can be notified ahead of time.
So, so in your bullet point where it says there's been interest, has been expressed in districts one, two, and three, have those community input or community meetings taken place, do you know?
They have not taken place yet, but I do know that they are in the process of being scheduled.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Galen, for your presentation. Just in the mixed units, the mixed income units that we have currently, what's the percentage? Because like with Barron's Branch, or what, Waco? What are the, I mean, what is the split now?
Yeah, Waco, I'm sorry, Barron's Branch was 100% affordable. I'm still waiting to get information on our previous, previous projects that have been existed over the years to get an idea of what that actual mix is. And then once I receive that information, I will bring it back.
Thank you, because I, you know, I, I agree with my fellow council members that the number of housing units that we have and need in our community are, are great. I think that, in, in, in the position that we're looking to fill, complete communities, you know, the mixed income facilities and, and, and buildings are what kind of does actually build that complete community, because you have everyone from your teachers and fire, public service officers to, you know, those just starting out, and it just kind of, it, it's a true reflection of what we actually deal with. So I am looking forward to what the study does indicate, so we can kind of see what our sweet spot is, and, and how we go forth and, and what we're looking for, because this is ours, and it's us to ask and set the tone of, of what we want to see in our city, in our community specifically, especially in districts one, let me speak for me, in District one. I would assume so in two and three, but, you know, let's, let's look at this, you know, eyes wide open to see what works best for us.
For our community.
Anything further? All right, thank you, Galen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Galen. Mayor and council, our next presentation is a discussion of the proposed changes to Chapter 5, Animals of the Code of Ordinances. Assistant City Attorney David Shaw is here to lead that discussion.
David?
For consideration tonight is the first reading on some amendments to our Animal Ordinance, Chapter 5. These primarily center around three main considerations, shelter fees, retail sale of cat and dogs, and then our beekeeping ordinance. I want to take these in the order of least complexity to most. The Animal Welfare Board has been working for the last several months with these priorities in mind, reducing the cost to house animals that could go home and preserve the relationships between our nonprofit and animal groups and our for-profit business community. And then, of course, we've been looking at this beekeeping statute for, for the last several meetings. The easiest to deal with is fees. As it's currently written, there's no subsection B, so we're asking to add that, that the city manager, his or her designee, be given authorization to exercise some discretion when to reduce or waive fees. The reason this comes about is there are animals who have been sitting in the shelter who could go home but for the payment of those fees. And so the shelter is paying to house animals that don't need to be there, and pet owners are, are trying to get their pets back but can't get them back just for the cost. And then from time to time, there's a need for shelter clearing events and promotions, and currently there's no, there's no authorization in the ordinance for those kind of promotional deals. And so we're asking that be added. Of course, policies and guidelines and things like that would be forthcoming from, from staff, but for now, just to get it in the ordinance so that that could be authorized is what we're bringing on that 581. The next has to do with retail pet sales, and these are specifically cats and dogs and cats and dogs only. I think it's very important to note that currently in Waco, our pet shops do not offer cats and dogs for retail sales. This is not a current issue that we're facing. It's more of a national trend of puppy mills and commercial breeders who are moving shop into cities. And so in Waco, if you go to any of our pet stores and you see a cat or dog, those cats or dogs are coming from our animal welfare community, our shelter. These are chipped, vaccinated, spayed and neutered, compliant animals that have been offered by our nonprofit organizations. And the board and staff and the animal welfare community at large believes that's the preferred situation. And so what this ordinance seeks to do is to preserve that relationship where our nonprofit and our for-profit animal groups are working harmoniously the way we have been, and also to signal to those commercial breeders, those puppy mills, things like that, that Waco's not going to be very fertile soil for that business process. That said, this, this statute, or this ordinance seeks to, of course, carve out our breeders, people who are responsible pet breeders or animal breeders who are working for the good of, of the species. In looking at some other statutes since the last time the Animal Welfare Board has met, there may be even some additional language or clarification, we could take that a step further. But as written, the ordinance is intended to, again, not change the way business is conducted in town, but to preserve it and keep it the way that it has been. And then lastly, and this is, I guess, the most complex of the ordinance changes, is our honeybee ordinance is now our beekeeping ordinance. And the highlights of this are that we have some standard, enforceable, clear standards for when somebody wants to do hobby or residential beekeeping. Under certain circumstances, there would be a flyaway barrier. The idea is that that gets the bees up, and when they go out to, to look for pollen or whatever, they get up flying and they get away from the neighbors. There's some standards about hive maintenance. And then after meeting with one of the local beekeeping experts, apparently it's standard practice in the beekeeping community to queen for docility and for temperament. And so if you have a hive that's behaving aggressively simply by requeening that hive or that colony, you can bring that back under control. So there's some standards for that. Additionally, we were concerned about sensitive areas, playgrounds, places of worship, schools, things of that nature. And so there's a 150-foot barrier around those sensitive zones to keep those, again, from any of the danger that might be associated with a mismanaged hive or colony. With that, as part of your packets, there's some miscellaneous ordinance amendments that go along with that. Some of that obviously is the definitions, just to add some specific language into the ordinance. Other things, these, these other provisions, animals at large, proper restraint, I don't think anyone's asking the bees to be on a leash or tethered, microchipped or anything like that. And so where those kind of conflicts arose, we went in and tried to correct those. Want to bring a couple of things to your attention. One of the concerns, of course, any citizen might have would be mismanaged hives. And so we've added the section B to the nuisance animals. The nuisance provisions we have for animals generally just simply don't work well when you're dealing with things like a beehive colony or bee colony. And so specifically, a colony would become a nuisance when it made unprovoked attacks on people or other animals of any kind, or substantially interfered with a property owner's reasonable enjoyment of his or her property. And so even if all of the other provisions of 597 were followed, if your hive is out of control, your colony's out of control, it becomes a nuisance and it gets treated like any other nuisance animal would be in town. Another thing, that this is not an ordinance change, 598, but we thought you should be aware of it. This is just, this is not an ordinance that's changing, but in the section, this is for chickens and rabbits and animals that have coops and things like that. There is this provision that could be read to apply to things like a hive, that any person harboring any animal, and animal's defined as any living thing that's not a human, so that would include a bee, they shall locate their, the housing of that animal, which could be our hive in this case, at least 50 feet from any residence excluding the residence of the person harboring the animal. So that's a neighbor provision. So each neighbor has a 50-foot buffer between their residence and wherever that hive might be kept already by virtue of this ordinance. That's nothing that's changing, but you may not know that unless we pointed that out. So we wanted to bring that to your attention. Those are the main changes to the ordinance section. Anything else? Again, we're open to, to hearing your concerns or, or comments about that.
Great job, David, very artful drafting around the existing ordinance. I thought it was a job well done. The, I'm just talking about the bees. I think, I think the, the dog and cat thing is basically happening, and we're kind of codifying around it, which I think is a good idea. On the bees, we went on from being way too restrictive, I think it was 300 feet with 100% consent of all, and that's not good, and that's what it was. And, but we, I think the last deal suggested we just delete that whole thing, which that might not have been the best idea either. So I like your, I like the thoughtful approach to, to drafting some guidelines that incorporate safe bee management and safety of neighbors as well, with the main issues being the flyaway barriers, the healthy hive, and, and distance from adjacent citizens from the property lines. But the question I did have though, because you did point out, because right now, as it's drafted in 59, Section 5-97B, it is, we have a 10-foot property line, and I guess for all other animals, it's 50 feet. And just in my diligence and looking at what other cities do around the United States in several, I think in most cases I looked at it's 25 feet. So I, I think I'm good with everything. I would just suggest we change that the 10 feet in 590, 5.97B from 10 feet to 25 feet.
And you're exactly right. It appears both ways in different ordinances, and so that's an easy change to make.
And that's really all I have. Again, there's, we could go deeper into the bee thing with colony density and registration and inspection rights and all that stuff, but I think this is a nice place, is a good place to land. And again, nice job of drafting, because it touches a lot of different parts of the ordinance.
David, thank you so much for the presentation, and I do want to thank you personally and the Animal Welfare Board on, on the work that has taken place with this presentation. I know it's been weeks and weeks of, of getting together and meeting, and, and I know because I've, I've joined with you in those meetings as well. So I really do appreciate the creative thinking and the out-of-the-box thinking and the research that has gone behind putting, putting these ordinance in place. I do want to just highlight a few things. So I, I really think that the fees, you know, giving the city manager or his or her, his or her designee, the provision or the, the flexibility to weigh those fees. I think from a fiscal point of view, I think if we can get those animals out of the shelter quicker, it saves us money down the long run. So in, in essence, we are making money because of, we're not having to pay for them to be housed for months at a time. So I really think that is a, a very wise choice and a very wise option. For the cats and dogs, you know, I love that even though that that practice is not taking place in our city right now, but to preserve that, I think that's very important, that, that we, with the growth that's happening and the development that's happening in our community, and we, we're receiving and, and with open arms welcoming, welcoming businesses that are coming into our community. I would hate where that ordinance or, or that, the, the way that things have been done might change because we haven't addressed it in our ordinances before. And so I, I do appreciate the, the fact that just really putting in there that the animals, if they're going to be sold for a cat or dog at a retail store, that they must come from a nonprofit or their city. I think that's very wise. I think it also just eliminates our constituents and citizens from receiving low health animals and making them spend more money down the road for an animal they purchased. They might not have known that there was something wrong with it from the very beginning. But one thing I do think that we need to address, and maybe not, maybe in the second reading, is, as I was looking at the ordinance and, and as I was discussing with other people, we don't talk about third-party breeders. And so I think that even though it might be implied in our ordinance, I would hate for us to get in a position where there is a lawsuit or something because we are not addressing that. And so I think, you know, if, if, you know, what I mean by third- if, if, you know, what I mean by third-party, if someone buys from the Waco Humane Society, they breed animals and in turn want to sell it to a retail shop, they in essence could say that they bought it, that it's coming from a nonprofit or one of our, our esteemed organizations here, and so, I think if we address that third-party breeding in the ordinance somehow, some way, I, I think there's other cities that address it, and maybe just doing a little bit of research and, and seeing what, how they address it in their community, I think would be, would help us down the road on our end. And then, as far as the bees, I, I do appreciate, once again, the work that is taking place. I know you and the committee has met with professional beekeepers and probably received more research and, and, and information that you bargained for, but, but I know you have taken that and really put, put much thought into it, and so, I do appreciate the, the wording that's, that's being put forward, because, once again, I think, one of the concerns from council, the first time it was brought up, it was, especially, you know, around our children and the places of worship and parks, and, and we're just people congregating, how do we protect that, and I think what has been, what is being proposed is a great way of addressing it, so, overall, thank you so much for your work on this.
The only other question I have is that, on, on the fee side, I mean, I am all for allowing the flexibility to, you know, waive as, as we deem fit, I would like to see, at least in the annual report from the Welfare Board or somebody, just kind of an accounting of how much we waive in fees, just so we kind of know what the impact is on that, I mean, we do, recognizing that there is a, a considerable positive economic impact by getting these animals out the door where we don't have costs associated with them, I'd still just be curious to see kind of what that, that revenue foregone actually is, because, I mean, you know, with the, the, say, reclamation fee, I mean, that was put in place to make sure that pet owners are responsible and not, you know, providing substandard, you know, corralling for them, and so, the fees were implemented with a purpose, I'm fine waiving them with a purpose, I'd just like to have an accounting of that, just on an annual basis.
Yeah, and, and I think that's a really good point, because, you know, we have partners at this shelter, and the partners at the shelter pay their portion based on their, the intake from those cities, and, and they pay it off the, the net expenses, and the net expenses are going to be impacted by the fees we waive, so I, I do think we have to be accountable there, it's something, that, that will be a part of the, the, the billing that we put together for the cities every year, we'll have to account for that.
Yeah.
I agree with that, but they're also affected by saving money and not housing their animals for a point or various reasons.
Balance, there's no doubt about it.
Okay, very good. I have one other question, David, and this is getting into the details more than I would like to, but I'm trying to understand the, the flyaway barrier a little bit better. What does that physically, and what does that physically look like? You're talking about a six-foot fence or a six-foot dense hedge, but I, I get that part, but how, what's the shape of that, what is it, is it?
Well, in general, that's going to be someone's fence, and so, depending on where in the yard the hive is located, that's going to be the, either a solid fence, in other words, it's something other than a chain link, four-foot fence or whatever, it's going to be either tall shrubbery, a tall, regular fence, it's going to extend to either side about ten feet, so the bees can have to shoot out laterally, not, not straight out, and the idea is just to get them up in the air, and so, what, I don't know that there would be a thing stopping someone from putting a six-foot tall wall in the middle of their backyard, but that's not actually what we're anticipating.
It's not, okay.
It's existing, you know, something other than a chain link fence or something completely permeable, it would have to be a regular six-foot size barrier.
Okay, so the, so the fence could be along, the, the flyaway barrier could be along their fence line, it just can't, it can't be permeable?
That's, that's the idea.
I got it, I got it, all right. I'm just a little slow on that one, and...
It took me a while, Mayor, also, when I made it, trust me, I had a lot of questions.
Thank you. And you're on the board, so, so the, if you change the number to twenty-five feet on, as, as Councilman Holmes asked in five point nine seven B, that's the first ten-foot measurement, as far as twenty-five feet from the property line, that does not apply to the ten-foot, the B two, which is ten feet beyond the hives of each, right? I mean, the, the twenty-five feet that you were talking about, Jim, was, was the distance from the, from the property line.
Right.
But that wouldn't require, I don't believe, unless I'm still not understanding, the ten-foot distance in number two to be increased to twenty-five feet?
You're correct, it would not.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
The only other question I had, and I just wanted to confirm this with our city attorney, if we just change that ten to twenty-five, can we do that as council, or does it have to go back through Animal Welfare?
You, you can do that in your motion tonight, based on the way we've posted this agenda item, so, so you can make a motion to approve with that change, and then, if the council agreed with you, that could be voted affirmatively.
Okay.
And then, it would come back, of course, the second reading with the actual change in the ordinance.
Thanks.
I really, I, I agree, I really appreciate all, all the hard work, and it's taken some creativity to get, get to this point, thank you very much. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, we will now recess the work session, reconvene regular session for executive session, that has read into the, up, up, has read into the record by City Secretary at four thirty-six P M.
Notice is hereby given, the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions, one, real property, Texts Open Meetings Act, section five five one point zero seven two, and two, economic development, Texts Open Meetings Act, section five five one point zero eight seven. We are now in executive session at four thirty-six P M.